Have something on that?
No.
Okay, I thought you were about to say something on that.
No.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Eastern City Council. Today is Tuesday, June the 21st, 2022. The time is now 7:10 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order before we call this meeting to order, please. Reverend Williams.
Let us pray. Father God, we come no other way, leaning on your everlasting love. Realize, Father, that we ask that you touch each and every last one of us, Father, as we conduct the business up here at the city of Easter. And one of the things, Father, that we want you to know, we realize you is love, and we feel like this city is representing love. So, Father, we just come to you and praise in your holy name, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Before we stand for the pledge of allegiance, let's have a moment of silence for our retired firefighter, worked for the organization for 25 years, Dwight Hines. Passed away a couple of weeks ago. Please, a moment of silence. Thank you all, rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
For the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Washington. Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilman Chisholm.
Here.
And Councilman Shaw.
Here. All right, good. All right, moving right along the course, our closed session will be at the end of the meeting if you have anything for us, David.
Yes, sir.
All right, approval of the agenda?
Some more, Mr. Chair.
This report.
Support.
All right, just for discussion purposes, as it relates to item E, Plant Moran will not be here tonight. Brian's actually on vacation, and Brian, because of COVID, they're not working, they're not coming to meetings. So, everything that they're doing is over in the internet. Everything is virtual, so for Plant Moran. However, we know that they have to come before us, actually with the water rates. And we know that the audit is complete, but the water rates, I know talking to Heidi last week, she said she had just got all accumulated all the information from Gleva. It's not from us, it actually comes from Gleva. And as it relates to the water report, the water rates and all that stuff, they'll be coming during the presentation. Mr. Green, I know that as it relates to item E, we had a public hearing at the last council meeting. I don't know necessarily what took place as it relates to the budget overall. I was just hearing that some things weren't complete, or some things were said, that like all of the information is not in the document. Is that something that you can speak to right now?
Oh, what information?
Or the information is different from what we spent days on going through?
Oh, no, we met as a council three or four times with every line item in the budget. Every council member had every opportunity to express their opinion about every line item in the budget, and that's what's in there.
You had a public hearing for the public to be able to speak and ask questions as it relates to the budget? Okay. All right. So, again, I know that I wasn't at the last council meeting when the public hearing was held. It's up to this council. If you guys want to actually have another special meeting, we can. I'm in communication with Plant Moran as it relates to someone coming and doing a presentation for us as it relates to, of course, the water rates, and then at that time they can explain, because it's, and I'm just hearing this, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, as it relates to Mayor Protim Howard, you said earlier, as it relates to us being in a $1.2 million deficit, that is not the case. We know that we took the ARPA money that we received from the state of Michigan, and this council agreed, and Brian Duncan actually did the report for us and put it into the actual general fund for the budget, and that all came in.
That's half, the half of it, right, the half of it.
No, the entire amount came in this year.
Okay, but the half, one half is coming for this fiscal year, and the other half is coming for 2023 fiscal year.
So, it's all, all this, it's all been, it's all now.
Okay, so we getting false figures then from this body then too, then, right?
No.
Okay, well, that's not what, that's what, well, we just wait till they.
So, the treasurer, the treasurer is understanding this, that the treasurer's responsible for any numbers that comes from Plant Moran or anyone else?
Right, well, well, let me read you what Plant Moran said in here.
Okay.
It's got FY22 budget includes a budget amendments not yet brought to council. So, we have no idea what our budget amendments are, okay? Because in talking, in our meeting, when I mentioned budget amendments, the treasurer didn't understand the budget amendments I was looking for, that we supposed to have, okay?
Yeah, he went over all of them.
Right, and then it's got here, it's got FY22 includes budget amendments council has not seen. FY22 will lose over $1 million even with 1.3 ARP money, revenue. FY23 is breaking even but using 1.3 of ARP revenue. And then it's got down here, that half of it is coming, did you guys get that? Half of it's coming this fiscal year, and the other half of the ARP money is going to FY23. But even if, even though we have that money, it's still not sustainable for our business expenditures. So, our business expenditures are still more than what we are bringing in.
Yeah.
So, and this is what we have here from Plant Moran, when they emailed, they emailed all of us this.
Yeah.
And then it said our audit, and I know he said the audit was done. Well, we normally, ever since I've been on council, if the audit is done, the auditors will bring us, we will have books in front of us, and the auditor will give us a presentation. So, how is the audit done that we don't have copies of?
Yeah, they're coming to do that, he just got done with it, what was it, Friday?
So, I mean, you can answer a year and a, but what I'm saying is the audit six months late.
Councilwoman, you're.
But, no, I'm not, just, just trying to figure all of this out because.
You're trying to figure it out, but you, the people that were paying to do the work, you're not even letting them speak.
Well, when he said the audit is done, then.
And speaking on something that you read.
I'm a year, since I'm always this, I'm a year.
It's not that you always.
I know, because I know what I'm talking about.
If you did, we probably wouldn't be in the situation we're in today.
Okay, whatever.
Okay. All right, Mr. Green, did you want to speak on any of those?
The audit, there's a draft, we have a draft. So, Plant Moran is looking at the audit, just came in. What happened, they review it, they give it to us?
Speak, speak up and make sure you got your mic on.
Audit draft is complete, it's a draft. Plant Moran is the accounting firm, looking over the draft. Once they review it, then they will give it to us and say it's complete, leave it to us.
As it relates to the ARPA monies?
As it relates to the ARPA money, we were planning on getting it all this year. We didn't. That's why you see the projected 1.2 deficit or what have you, because we didn't get the money that was budgeted to get this year. We only got half. So, because we only got half of it, we're that much short. That other half will come in next year, next fiscal year.
For this budget?
For this.
For the one budget that we're talking about now, okay. Okay, but anyway, what I'm saying to this body is that if you want to remove the item tonight from the agenda to set a special meeting, we need to do that, but we need to all be present, or at least have a quorum. So, we know we didn't put dates out and said, you know, can you guys be here? You know, we, we said times and all the other stuff. What works for us as a body, let's get some times and some dates and make it work, because July 1st is coming.
And we, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
We met, we went through the budget, we met three or four times.
Yeah, I was here.
And we had everything up on the screen, and we went through each line item, and everybody had an opportunity to express their opinion about the line items. That was the time to do it. So, if there was anything that anybody had to say, we had three or four meetings for it to be said.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
We didn't go through all the budget. We just went, we went, we didn't go through all the budget.
We went through the general fund.
Okay, but that's not all, that's not, we said the budget like we went through all of it. No, we didn't. But there are some things in, in, in this budget that was supposed to have been moved, we removed, and it's still in our budget right now.
Like what?
Like in the mayor's budget, okay? Choice, the broadcasting is supposed to be come back over to the mayor's, and then.
And it is.
It, well, it's not, if it is, it's not reflecting on here, on our sheets that it is, okay? But it still shows that, and it was something else, the assistant, that dollar amount for the rates, we had said no, that's still in there.
What assistant?
The mayor's assistant.
Mayor's assistant? Oh, so, let's keep, let's, let's just be clear, this is the mayor's recommended. So, this is what the mayor's recommending, so you have the power to either say yay.
Well, we were saying yeah and a, on our meet, in our meetings. We were telling me to take, we were telling stuff to take stuff out, but I mean, I mean, ultimately, it is.
And, and, and again.
Okay.
Before we did that, you were coming to me and saying, well, you guys should already put the recommended budget together without meeting with us.
You, you was, but because when we had our meetings, and it took three, not three and a half hours, we went over each budget line item, and you guys were talking as though there was the first time that you guys was even looking at this budget, because the mayor was saying, well, you know, I didn't like this, well, maybe we should take this out. That's why I said what I said. And I, and when I said budget amendments, and you didn't even know what the budget amendments were, you said it's in this budget, and I said, no, it's not.
Okay.
So, so, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, either.
So, so, you know, we can't, we, we don't need to go for tit for tat. All I said is that when we went, and I even told the mayor, I said, mayor, half of this stuff should have been in budget amendments that we have not seen yet. So, yeah, we need another minute, and we need another meeting, because we don't know what our budget amendments are.
That's not reflective of this budget.
There's either one.
It is reflected in this budget, the budget amendments.
Can I speak, please? Either one or two things. One thing you're saying, well, you guys should put the budget together, you're the mayor, and then give it to us. That was the first thing you said.
That's how we normally used to do it.
That's not.
But you're different, but you're different from most.
Can I speak, please?
Well, I'm just saying.
Can I speak, please?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so, we didn't do that. We said, well, no, we're all gonna meet as a group, as a family, and we're gonna decide what the budget is. It's not gonna be just me and the mayor, and then we come to you with this, what we want? No. So, we met as a group, and everybody had a decision, everybody had an opportunity to say what they want.
Okay.
So, we did.
All right, so we know we did that. Now, I'm again asking this body right now, do you guys want to remove this item from the agenda for tonight?
Make a motion?
And then have, yep, and then have the meeting with Plant Moran, see when they can come.
Right.
Because at this point, again, because of COVID, and because they're limited on their staffing, whatever it is, they're working directly with Mr. Green. Mr. McGreen, you're probably on the phone with them at least, what, three?
Every day.
Okay.
So, do we have to go virtual, because they don't come in?
Exactly, so we probably would have to go virtual.
Okay.
To actually bring them in to be able to say what it is.
Okay.
Of course, go ahead.
This budget, and, and don't it have a deadline on it?
Yep, June 30th.
June the 30th.
June what?
30th.
Which is about a week, a little bit over a week.
So, we need to meet like next, tomorrow, or the next day, you know? So, we need to get with Plant Moran and ask them when they can come and actually meet.
So, to be.
And then we'll let them say the same thing that we're saying, that we're saying, and then we'll go from there.
So, so, would you ask?
So, I mean, as it relates to the budget, I mean, again, again, to this agenda, do you want to remove this item?
Yeah, so, make a motion to, so I make a motion to remove.
With the approval, whoever did the motion to approve the agenda would need to.
Okay, who did the, the maker and the supporter?
Maker and the supporter to remove this item from the agenda for tonight, and then we'll have a special meeting. Shaw?
I, I make the motion to, to, to remove.
Okay, to when?
Till we schedule a meeting, what, what, what's the date?
Okay, all right, is this, well, Steve?
I'll support it for discussion, so we can choose dates.
All right, then, so what, what's your dates?
So, do they?
We'll see, we'll see if they're available. Now, they said typically in the evening, so we need to give them a few times that they're not available. I think they got them working on the schedule from like nine to five. So, we may need to do something during the day, like normal business hours, you know? So, come, come on, guys.
Can I ask a question?
Of course you can ask a question, this is discussion.
So, then, what were the purpose of all of them hearings that we had for the budget? If in fact, we still gotta wait for Plant, uh, we gotta wait for Plant Moran?
To satisfy this body.
Satisfy this body?
Yeah, it's like, it, it, you know, again, you know, you talk about transparency. I brought the treasurer and set him right here with all the department heads, with the screen with BSNA, and we went through the line items of each of the budget. Of course, I saw the budget before I presented it to you all. Again, as we're sitting and we're talking, we're negotiating.
Another question.
You guys are telling me back and forth, now, I don't like this, or I like that. I'll say, okay, yeah, well, you know what, let's work through it.
Another question.
So, go ahead.
So, that mean, that mean, when we meet with Plant Moran, that the figure's gonna change?
No.
Mr. Mayor, you actually, what, we're 250,000 in the black?
Yeah, well, last, when we last met, it was 14,000, and then I met with Plant Moran, we did some more work, and now we got it up to 250. So, going in the right direction, but that's okay, we can wait.
That's good, if that's what they need to hear, you need to hear from some other folks that we pay $180,000 to.
Mr. Mayor?
Let's, let's, let's do, let's do it. Okay, yes, go ahead, you got some dates?
I think, um, just in regards to what Councilman Williams was asking, I think was a little bit confused with the process, is normally we would have an audit presentation, the budget, budget presentation, we'd have amendments, and then we would vote on the budget, you know, by Plant Moran, but we haven't had any of that, so that's why it's a little confusing.
You haven't had the audit, you said.
Well, presentation, right.
Okay.
And I'm not saying not by the treasurer, because we would have the treasurer go through the budgets with us all the time, we would have study sessions, of course.
We've been doing that, for sure.
Like even last year, we were on Zoom. Plant Moran came before us in February and other times, and we went over the graphs and all of that at nauseam. So, I guess that's just why it's kind of shaky, because it's like, okay, we're getting ready to vote on the budget, we haven't had a budget amendment, we haven't had an audit.
There's a budget amendment for last year.
Right, we, we had, right, we had one.
Not for this one right here, we're about to approve.
Right, right, right.
Got you, okay, I just wanted to make sure we got this.
Yeah, but we had the one, and it was really to bring in, or to account for the funds and selling of land and property and stuff like that.
Right.
That's all. So, we just looking at, I guess you could say, all those different steps that usually take place before we get to this point, and that's why probably, yeah, the figures probably won't change, but it's an additional step of checks and balances.
I have no problem with that.
Or initial.
That's what your job is, that's what our job is, is a, is a council, is to look at the budget. I'm, I'm not opposed to that, you know? That's why I brought it to you the way I brought it to you, so you can look at it yourself.
And so, my additional question too, because I know we had been waiting, and Plant Moran kept saying they had dates, they weren't available, and this and that and the other, but now we right at crunch time, and it's still at a thing where nobody has made themselves available to be here yet.
And we've been on them, believe me.
Did, did they ever provide any dates that they might be available, that we could cross-reference with?
Well, I'll tell you, being that they just got the draft today.
The draft audit?
They didn't get to meet with us until they got it.
Oh, the audit you're talking about?
Yeah, the audit draft, yeah. So, I mean, for them to meet with us without having the audit, would have, they wouldn't have been able to.
So, that's for last year's budget, what about this year's budget?
I'm talking about this, this budget.
Right.
Next year.
Right.
They just got that audit today.
Okay, got you.
So, they just got the audit today, they can't come present to us, and they ain't got the audit.
And the water rates you just got, what, last week?
They haven't got the water rates, yeah.
Given that information, so now what would be a timeframe that it would take for a firm like them to review that, to be able to come?
Oh, no, they, they, they got it today, they're gonna review it, they'll let me know something tomorrow, next couple of days, and that'll be done.
So, so we can move this process forward, I think we're all in agreement that we need another meeting, what, what, when are you all available? Give us a few days this week and next week, and then we'll, out of six days, if you give me three this week and three next week, if they're not available, then we got a problem with our, with our folks. And you guys are more than welcome to send them emails, talk to them directly, all the information is there, encourage you to do so, so nobody in this, on this body community to think I'm trying to keep them from us. Again, I brought them to us.
Now, Mr.
They hadn't been here before.
Mr. Mayor, just.
In any administration, Plant Moran wasn't part of the process, so let's just be clear with that.
Just to piggyback on that, Plant Moran said, for the record, when that did occur, that they preferred to talk to this council through your office, they wouldn't talk to us directly.
Yeah, I did, I remember they did say that, and I told them, and I went back and told them, no, if they ask you any questions, council members ask you any questions, answer those questions.
Okay.
So, I just want to make sure, what I say, they did say that, out of respect for the charter and what it is. So, I get that, but I did correct them and say to them, no, talk to them directly, because we want full transparency. So, can't nobody say, I'm trying to do something behind somebody's back, and it's like the, it's been the problem, we haven't ran our community, we haven't ran the organization like a business. That's been the problem for all these years that we've been sitting on council doing nothing. Go ahead, dates?
Dates, daytime or evening, what'd you say again, daytime?
Give us some morning, give me some morning times you guys can meet, and then give me some afternoon time.
So, it can't be Monday? So, what about Tuesday, or next, the 28th?
Tuesday to 28th, the next week?
24th.
Let's see here. Write these down, City Clerk, if you could, please, because we're gonna send them all to them. So, we're looking at the 24th, you say?
The 24th.
As this Friday?
I can't do the 22th.
Okay, and the 23rd?
Do the 24th, that's one person?
What day can you do?
Anybody else?
I can do the 24th or 25th.
Okay.
What day can you do?
The 23rd, the 27th.
You can do the 23rd?
Do the 23rd.
The 27th is a, Plant and Commission meeting, so we can't do it on the 27th.
You can do the 23rd, what we can do the morning of the 27th, afternoon of the 27th, anybody not available in the morning?
Do the 23rd, you say, what, what's happening on the 23rd?
No, I'm just saying, evenings for the meeting, 23rd, but the next week, I'm.
Can you do in the morning?
Where?
Well, you know, we.
On Zoom, if that's the case.
On the 27th?
On the 27th?
Yes, I can do morning on the 27th.
Okay, 27th, that's the AM. Okay, the 23rd, we said that we could possibly do something on the 23rd?
It would be evening for me.
I want you to know what day it is.
It was Thursday.
Okay, do we even know the 23rd? No, evening on the 23rd, okay, so we know that the 27th AM, for sure. What about the 28th?
I'm available all next week.
I'm available all day.
28th, everybody available either way, AM or PM?
Yes.
What day did that on?
That's on, that's on the Tuesday. What about the 29th?
Yep.
29th, same thing? You guys are available morning, afternoon, whatever it is? All right, do that, AM or PM? All right. And what about the 30th? I mean, it is what it is, man, we, we can't leave no grass right now.
What happens if we're late?
Nothing.
Nothing?
See, and this is what everybody forgets too.
They don't hold up no money?
Hold on, well, let me, let me explain this, this is what everybody forgets too. We talk about our resources and talk about how we're connected. Joyce Parker, who was our city manager, is the deputy treasurer for the state that actually oversees our region, so she's working closely with us. She's actually has. With us on the budget and anything that we need. So, when we talk about the state coming in, taking over, taking over our community, that's not about to happen, especially under Gretchen Whitmer, she's, they, that's not even part of what she's trying to do. She want to get us solvent, we definitely need to, but we know that we got to increase our revenue. We can't continue to cut bare bones, because we're bare bones right now in every single capacity. When we talk about we possibly won't have a community, I think out of Shaw, I think Councilwoman Howard, Mayor Protim Howard, you guys were here with the consent agreement.
Absolutely.
You went through that. I've been through emergency financial management. I was here before then, with emergency financial management. So, I know that it's ugly, we do not want to go that way, and we're not going that way. So, people keep saying that, we're going that way, we're headed to, no, we're not, if we do the right things. We have 1,100 properties in the city of Easter that are not on the tax road, that we're paying insurance for, and they were cutting grass, and we're doing all types of maintenance on them. That alone, when we talk about tax revenue, has changed the dichotomy of our budget, but we haven't done that. We haven't strategically planned, we haven't looked at the big picture altogether, and we haven't executed it. We talked about master plans in our city, we got a master plan, really, what's the checks on the master? We haven't checked any boxes on the master plan. So, those are the things that we need to really start to think about, what we're doing, and that's why I'm pushing to sell property. We have to sell property, get it back on the tax road, so then that way you can build your base. So, that being said, we know that that's not going to happen, but we have to work together. We have to consolidate our services, there's some things we can do, and we can work with Dearborn Heights, Wayne, whatever, Westland, whatever, it's just what it is, and we're trying to do our best, and that's what we're doing now, with the police department, for example, the sheriffs, MSP, all of those, any other agencies that have come to the table to help us fill the gaps, but I need for you guys to be thinking too, of ways that we can do that, not just preaching gloom and doom to our community. We can't keep preaching gloom and doom to our community, if some members has been on here for three terms.
That's me.
Oh, okay.
Well, say my name. I mean, you speaking, say my name.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
And I'm only one vote, and I've been preaching, and I've been preaching for three terms, this budget.
Yep.
That's all I've been talking about this budget.
I get it, but at the same time, what's the resolution? What are we bringing?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
No, please.
Now, let's just be clear.
Go ahead.
It's the mayor's responsibility to make sure the departments don't go over budget. It's the council that have the power to allow any department to go over budget, or not.
Well, yeah, but they wouldn't know that unless we give them the information, so that's what we were talking about earlier.
And by the time we get it, it's over with.
Wait, wait, let me finish.
Oh, God, damn.
You're getting the information in the financial statements that I give you.
And they over every time.
So, some of them are, and some of them are not yet. So, when you're getting this information that's giving you a picture of where you're at, you take action.
We do, but let me tell you this, half of the figures is not right, because I've been saying it all along, the, no, they was not.
I don't want to digress, I don't want to digress. Mr. Green?
No, no, he needs to stop, because he's, he's not telling the truth.
I don't want to digress, let's not, let's not digress. I think that all of us can use some training, and let me just say that right off, I think that all of us can use some training, I think that all of us, you know, we talk about Emmett Mill all the time, it's like, really, you know, having them come out and actually work with us as a body, saying that these are your responsibilities, this is your responsibility, and this is how you work, to, to be a better council person and representative for your community. So, that's myself included, so it's all working together. I know we all love the community, we're all passionate about the community, but at the end of the day, we have to do something, we can't keep saying that we're gonna cut, 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 when we're really down to bare bones, that does nothing for the morale of this community, especially the people that actually we pay every day to work and do service within our community. So, if we put our heads together, we work and support one another, and look at what we can do, then, you know, we can change that tide, and we are doing that, let's do that, I know that we are doing that. So, all that being said, Plant Moran will come out, do the same thing that we presented, Brian, we already know what he's gonna say, he's gonna tell us, cut some more. We already know that already, but where you gonna cut from? And that's the reality, we got to bring in money to the bottom line, we got to be focused in on these dilapidated properties that's been costing us, costing us thousands of dollars, not only in manpower, but also insurance. Like right now, like we need to focus in on that, vacant properties within our community that's right next door to your homes, we got to focus in on that. Who's responsible for that? Is it you, taxpayers, as citizens? That's what we've been doing, can we continue to operate like that? No, somebody has to manage the business, and that's what we haven't been doing, and we got to work together to do that. So, that being said, we know we got a few dates, we'll put them out to Plant Moran to, to make that happen. Any other adjustments to the agenda for tonight? Everybody okay with that? Everybody okay with what the dates we put out there? We're talking about June, did we say the 23rd, or no? The 23rd, did we say AM or PM?
PM, PM for that one.
We did say PM on the 23rd, just to go back home real, real quick, 27th AM, 28th AM, 29th AM or PM?
I can't, I can't, I can't meet on the AM.
You can't meet on the 28th?
28th, what is that on a weekday?
28th is on a weekday, yes. Tuesday, weekday. AM or PM?
I'd go PM.
Okay, so, yeah, that's what I got here, okay? 29th, AM and PM?
Anytime.
All right, and then the 30th, what about AM or PM? All right, and then the thirtieth, what about AM or PM? Everybody good? Anytime, AM, PM, all right.
AM is okay with me.
All right, then, so we will be, I'll put you guys all on the email, Mr. Green? Let's put them all on the email to Plan Moran, saying these are the dates that the council picked them. We expect for you to be here. Period.
City clerk, can you send me those dates?
Let's make sure that we get that done, okay? All right then. And then any questions or any comments that you had before then, or any changes that you've seen in the budget that should be reflected based off of what we did, line item by line item, please point them out because we do have a human error. It can occur, you know? It may be just a typo or whatever it is. Let's get it [__], because that's why I put Mr. Green in front of us in the board and BSNA live so we can change it right then. So if it didn't happen, let's make sure we make that happen, okay?
These figures here, right?
Yeah, well, they're gonna come before the, we're gonna have them come before us and then we go from there, okay? We're gonna try to get them in person, so everybody know that. So we're gonna try to get them in person so we can get them here, so we can invite you guys back out again. If you have any questions, you can ask them then, because we know virtual is just what it is, you know? But we try to have both options available, okay? All right then. Anything else on the agenda? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, I just have a motion carries. All right, moving right along, getting off into consent agenda?
Some of.
Good support? Moved and properly supported? Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
I just have a motion carries. Boards and commissions, going around, anybody got any? Boards and commissions, you added, you didn't have anything to put in? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I believe.
Please, go ahead.
I'm forgetting, I don't have it wrote down before me, and I have to check. Uh, Lawana Adney Mitchell, she's a commissioner, I believe, on Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Um, someone had brought my attention. I believe she wanted to be on the beautification committee?
Okay.
Okay, beautification committee.
She wanted to be on it. Okay, good.
Well, I would like to make a motion to nominate her to beautification committee.
Some of.
Moved and properly supported? Any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carry. Got you another commission? All right, anything else?
Not for me.
All right, hear none, let's go off into new business. Please, city clerk?
So the first item is to consider approving a request from Darlanda Garner to close Oakwood Street between Central and Eastern on July fourth, twenty twenty-two for a Fourth of July celebration from three PM until ten PM.
Some of.
Support. Moved and properly supported, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carry, item B.
Second item is consider approving the request from Walter Cooper Terrell to close Colgate Street between John Daly and Princess on July third, twenty twenty-two for a block party from twelve PM until ten PM.
Move, Mr. Chairman?
Support.
Moved and properly supported, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carry, item C, please.
Consider authorizing the DPS director to make application to the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, for an annual permit to work with the state trunk line right of way on behalf of the city of Inglewood. And consider adopting a resolution to be submitted to MDOT as part of the requirement to submit the permit application.
What?
Some of.
Support? Moved and properly supported, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carry, item D, please.
To consider authorizing the sale of the former city hall building identified as parcel number four, four, zero, one, eight, zero, three, zero, one, eight, one, zero, 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 one, three, two, SACD slash Nokia Smart Cities Partnership in the amount of twenty thousand dollars and payment in lieu of taxes at the full Averum tax rate of six thousand five hundred annually.
What's your plea? Seeing that there's no motion, motion fails. All right, moving right into public participation. All right, this gives you an opportunity here in the public. If you signed up to come before the council, please state your name for the record. U Street? What do you need?
I, um.
Can you go, just speak right through the mic? Thank you, speak on it.
I, um, I attended the planning committee meeting last Wednesday, the fifteenth. And I was a little disturbed at what I saw, the people that was, you know, on your panel. Um, except for Mr. Chisholm, he seemed to know what was going on, this is regarding the America, the marijuana medical and recreational. You had one individual, my opinion, seemed like she was heavily dedicated. Then you had another individual who wanted to vote on something that she knew nothing about. And my thing is, I don't know how you guys pick these individuals, but why would you have someone on your panel and they not know what's going on? Or what they voting on? And the other thing is, the individuals who's trying to, um, get the permit to bring in the, um, dispensary, do they live in the city of Inglewood? If not, why can't they take that to their city? I'm just trying to understand what's really going on here and how does the city benefit from that?
All right.
I can have a seat though, you know?
Yeah, you can. Let me, let me, if you could, please, can you, you want to put your information? You said you already, are you talking to the, are you talking to the chair? Are you talking, I'm sorry, Mr. President?
Well, no.
Are you talking directly?
No, no, no.
And you, do you, or would you like a response? That's what I'm asking. Would you like a response from us? It won't happen tonight just because of what it is, but.
I can say Mr. Chisholm, he knew more than what the other members on your panel, you know, knew. I just want to know, how do you pick these individuals to sit on this planning committee and make these determinations or, you know? How is that, you know, how does it happen?
Yeah, so, so, so basically with any commission, what we've asked for is basically your resume to tell us who you are and all that, and if you have background associated with something like that, especially at the level of planning commission. You know, you want to have some type of understanding of planning overall, doing business and all of that stuff. So that's basically how it happens. And then the nominees are suggested by the mayor, and then they're confirmed by the council. But I can't speak for everybody that's on the body right now because I didn't choose them all. So I don't know who you're talking, if you're talking.
I don't know their names. I just know what I observed.
Yeah.
And I was pretty, you know, displeased with what I saw. And then you had the individuals here who want to, um, what's the word I want to use? Who wants to get the permit to do these things, putting words in this person's mouth where they should not be doing that.
I can't speak to that. I wasn't at the meeting, but at the same time, I know that the body is pretty, pretty solid. I don't know.
Like I said, Mr. Chisholm, from my, from what I gathered, knew more about the marijuana recreation or the, um, medical part more so than the individuals that was, you know, up here representing the city. And do they represent just, you know, a certain area or just the planning committee overall?
Right, so it's the city itself. So it's the planning commission. So they're the planning commission they recommend to the council based off of whatever, you know, the, out of that, that hearing, basically, whatever they, you know, based off of from the planning department. Where the planning department recommends for the most part to the planning commission, educate them, the planning commission votes, recommend to the council.
Well, I cannot say if they knew anything about marijuana, from what I gathered, no.
Okay.
My thing is, you know, why would they vote or recommend if they know nothing about it?
I wasn't at that meeting, so I can't speak to that. Okay? I'll definitely talk to the chair and then we'll go from there. All right, man. Rochelle Wells?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council. Uh, my first concern is that, uh, after, uh, being President Dwight Hines funeral, I saw no negatives from the city of Inglewood. I did not hear any proclamations from the city of Inglewood and uh, firefighters and policemen are, are dear to my heart. You know, my son was a firefighter. And, um, for someone to have given the city all they had, and as long as he worked here as a firefighter, I thought that was disgraceful. That no one sought out to give him any recognition at his service. So, I mean, we don't want to look bad all the time, and certainly we want to make sure that we know where our mistakes are and to rectify to some degree. And that's not to throwing any dirt on anyone specifically. It's just a point, it's a point of information that I thought needed to be uh, disseminated here at this meeting. Because I'm sure if it looked bad to me, it looked bad to, to his, to his people, to his family. So, um, I think that we, if we're gonna be representative of a city, we, we need to do it fully. Um, my, my second concern here is that, um, the, 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 the sale and purchase of, uh, prime property in the city of Inglewood, I don't care how long it's been vacant. We've had trash houses that have been [__] forever. You just said it. Um, you can buy them for twenty thousand. Why would we sell a property, prime property in a prime area for just twenty thousand dollars? I'm sure you want to make some profit. I'm sure you want to make some money. But that's not making money. That's just going out the world backwards to, to me. Uh, um, knowing a little bit about, um, how you, how you work that situation, but, um, if I were to sell that property, it certainly wouldn't be for twenty thousand. Simply, simply, my simple reasoning is that I could buy a trash house for twenty thousand here in the city. You know, so if that's a trash house and that's not prime property, then I just, you know, I need to be, somebody can explain it to me at some point. Um, other than that, um, I'd like to also know how many, um, marijuana dispensaries are we going to have in this small city of ours? Answer. Anybody?
That's a question that we can't answer at this point.
Well, we have a mandate, don't we, as to how many we can have?
Mr. Attorney, you want to speak to that, please?
Yes, right. Right now, the, we have two dispensaries in the city of Inglewood. Well, we have two open dispensaries in the city of Inglewood right now. I don't know that the third one is open yet.
Yeah, it is open.
It is open, three fifteen is open. That was under the initial ordinance that was created. There was an amendment to the ordinance that now the marijuana facilities are governed by zoning, but right now there are three. And at the planning commission, I don't, I don't know if you were present or was that the other lady that was speaking to the planning commission? There, there were other applications that are now pending, but right now there are three.
So if they're pending, that means that they can be allowed, other, other facilities can be allowed in the city?
Yes.
And, and that, would that, would that exceed fifteen, ten, what?
No, based on the zoning, there, there are certain requirements. And actually, you know, man, I don't know if you want a debate to happen, but actually, it, it's, it's, it's based on a lot of variables, whether or not how close you are to a school or church, to another light facility. Uh, but the zoning controls, and what many people don't understand is that if a person owns a property, he has a right to do what he's legally is authorized to do by the state. People may not like the use of marijuana, the industry of marijuana, just like they may not like a liquor store or they may not like an adult bookstore. But we can't, as a city, prevent people from opening what's authorized use by the state with their own property. Now, there are things you can do to curb it, but years ago, under previous administration, Inglewood opted in to the industry. And that was because we had no other steady means of revenue for the city.
So that says to me that, uh, if I want to come in here and buy all the properties on Michigan Avenue and put in, um, hookah lounges of marijuana.
As long as it's authorized. There are certain uses based on how the property is zoned.
Oh, okay, depends on how it's.
I can't come in and open up a hookah lounge next to you. In certain, certain areas.
The zoning.
Correct.
Okay, that answers that question, but, um.
And I'll follow back up with you in private on the other issue that you mentioned, just because it was, that was, that was, yeah. I, I hear you one hundred percent, believe me. We were working with the family to get some information and there was just a lot going on, so. Even though I wasn't in town, but we did try to get them [__] stuff and actually we did work with them to get them some things. But I don't want to speak on the family's business, but know that we respect Officer Hines. He was a friend of mine. So I totally hear what you're saying one hundred percent. So, yeah. But we, we had to lean on the family. So, so, so I understand that. We just didn't show up. Okay? All right. Gabe Henderson, Commissioner?
Good evening, family.
Good evening.
We all, we all, no doubt. I'm here to, uh, beautification, okay? Our kickoff went well. Tony up in heaven, she would have been proud of us, you know, and things are looking better and so forth. I thank everybody who came out and we got to continue, you know? You know, the, the good looks of how things, your city and all that make people say, yeah, this is the place to be somebody. Okay, okay, and we got this, uh, okay, June, that's, that's right, June the twenty-fifth, we're gonna have another, you know, uh, clean out, cleanup. Uh, uh, we're gonna be at the Booker Dozier Rec, able to, you know, give gloves, give, uh, trash bags and have some proper coffee and some water. Definitely, you know, we're gonna have some cold water, right? It's gonna be hot that day.
Is it nine AM, sir?
Yes, nine, nine AM, yeah. And, um, we're gonna have to be there. Uh, with something else, uh, oh, boy, yeah, so we're gonna be there, uh. And, uh, you know, we had our Juneteenth, you know, our Juneteenth went well. Well, you know, Jew people were celebrating all, I wonder why the folks wasn't there, but the folks here and folks there. Our party and all, but that's a wonderful thing to recognize, you know? We, uh, importance and reverence, you know, of something that happened, you know, for us, you know, to be things saying that, we are, we are free. Okay? And we got to act like it too. And one most important thing, freedom comes with wisdom, understanding, of course, love, and we got to value that. That's the most, only perfection that anybody can understand, that is love, and with that you can do so much. And we got to do that love, 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 you know? Uh, and I, I think that's about all. And, and like I say, you know, the veteran, I, I, and I, I want to thank, you know, Ms. Sandra, you know, for the, you know, veteran patch, you know, had a lot of good stuff, some stuff they needed to use. But I knew some folks who needed some of that stuff, you know, yeah, and so they, they, they was thankful to receive that. And, uh, I think that's all I have to say. Love you. Hey, keep on the good work, you know, keep on a good foot, you know?
Yes, sir.
I see y'all.
I love you too.
You, do the, do the chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, you can thank Councilman Chisholm. He partnered with Von Respite, which is a veterans resource center to get those packets.
Right, yeah, uh, what, what, you, Ms., Ms., Ms. Trina, Katrina, well, you remember her?
Yeah, Katrina Von, Von Respite.
Yeah, how's she doing?
She's just fine. In fact, she just called me. I had to text her. I'm at a meeting.
Thank you, tell her, tell her Gabe say thank you, you know?
I will. Is Mr. Stubbs still here?
He, uh, I think he left, uh.
Oh, okay, because he came for that and Stephen had some with him to give them to him tonight, so.
And I, I, I'm a Vietnam veteran. I wish I could have had something there when I was in the jungle, living, living with the [__]. Some of that stuff was good, because I was pretty raunchy back then. I had, could have got some of that stuff back in the day.
Appreciate you, man. Thank you. Pastor Overman? There you are, man.
Good evening, everyone. So just want to, uh, make a couple of announcements.
Councilman Williams? Point of order, sir.
I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
So again, Pastor Jean, um, just want to thank everyone for their support and endorsement. Very excited about what's happening with the campaign. Do appreciate my great city. Want to acknowledge the amazing time I had with We Rise and the Juneteenth celebration. It was something for us. It was something for us all to be very proud of. When Pastor Hearns asked the oldest person there, one of the mothers, for the authority to speak, it really touched us in understanding who we are as a people. So, about the work that is being done here. I love how the thoroughfare is looking with the flowers, so very appreciative of that. And our communities just wanted us all to understand who we are together and how proud I am of my community and what I see happening and what has happened throughout my life here. So, again, thank you, we're having a block party for Mother's Pantry and all. We have lots of resources, as we know, but we love sharing them and being a part of the community. We are doing hiring for young people. So, if you have someone between fourteen and twenty-four, interestingly enough, the wages went up. So, they started thirteen to fourteen dollars for summer programming this year. So, again, thank you for everything you're doing. Want you to know that there are people here who support the city of Inkster. They are excited about what's happening in the city of Inkster. And I appreciate your passion and the work that you're doing. God bless.
Thank you. All right, City Clerk?
Yes, we begun, we begun sending out the absent voter ballot applications to our residents. So, some of you may have already gotten them in your mailbox. And for others, they're forthcoming. So, we'll begin issuing the ballots on Thursday, the twenty-third. So, we're prepared and ready for you all to come and request a ballot. You can mail it in or you can request it online at cityofinkster.com.
All right. What's this election? When is the date for the election?
Oh, I'm sorry, August second, Tuesday, August second.
All right.
Election day.
All right, perfect. Attorney?
I have nothing.
All right, Mayor Counsel, going around, Councilwoman Wiley.
Oh, boy. Most of my stuff is for closed sessions, so.
All right. Councilman Chisholm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say to all the father figures present tonight and those interviewing all, hope you all had a joyous Father's Day. Also, I did attend multiple Juneteenth celebrations across the city over the weekend. And it was a bit different on Monday to see businesses and governmental entities actually being closed and observing Juneteenth. My hope is that folks know the history of it and not just taking it as a date of party and not think about how to improve the quality of life for those who were impacted by oppression and/or slavery. A lot of us just hear Juneteenth, and this is the first year that it's been observed as a federal holiday. And I believe it's something that in schools, they need to begin speaking on more than just during Black History Month. As we know, we go through the rest of the school year talking about any and everything, and we only have a certain section of the year to talk really on Black history. And in some of the schools, they want to take it out. And I think that's unfair to all people, because it's not just our history, it's world history. Because of what occurred, had some type of beneficial impact or negative impact all over the world, not just like in our community or our state or in our country alone. Also, with the agenda item tonight that failed due to lack of support, I'm trying to get to it, Item D, and it was considering authorizing the sale of the former City Hall building. I know in orientation, it was discussed, but we didn't get to the full discussion of what we may like to see or how we should handle this appropriately. And I think we need to continue the discussion so we go down it the right way. Just so everybody can get out what they need to get out and express so everybody's on the same page. Because it was just a lot of confusion, you know, from what we're thinking, what the general audience is thinking, what the applicant is thinking, and what, you know, all the council is thinking. So, I think just, we need to discuss that more and have a little bit more time, because it seemed like we didn't really have time to expand upon it. And I did write some notes and everything like that, but we went ahead and moved forward because we need, we know we needed to continue the business of the city. And other than that, because I do see the vision for it, but I think there are some changes that can occur. And I did say that before, and I did say, you know, thank you, because I didn't know. I mean, I see the trucks at different, or anything like that, but I can't stop at every single thing to say, hey, what are y'all doing over here? Half the time, we, we don't know if that's safe or not, or we pick up the phone or we send the email saying, what's going on over here? And in that case, you know, if I did see them and I didn't send that email as I usually would, you know, I take fault into account and believe that. But going forward, I do think we need to have further discussion about this project so that we can all be on the same page and make sure we're doing what's best for the city, its residents, the future residents, and the applicants that come before us to make sure everybody has due process. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Williams?
I just had one thing, I, I didn't know, and I just personally, I did, I did not know that they did not send a resolution or something for the Heinz funeral.
Let's just clear that up. Basically, what happens is the family will send us a bio or some type of information, obituary, and then we'll put the resolution to the city clerk, and the city clerk will formulate that. So, because of everything that was happening, we know that Dwight was divorced and his ex-wife and his son was trying to work and do some things and figure out insurance and some other stuff that was with the city. And they, we requested them to send us the information and it never came.
Yeah, but I, I could have, you know, I, I thought, I thought it would have been taken care of.
Yeah, we would have done that, we, we, we always do that. So, that, that's what happened in that instance. We still, we'll, we'll definitely, it's still forthcoming, we'll make sure that we present it to us. We can go from there, because I was in direct communication with his, his ex-wife, his son, as it relates to some pension and benefits from the city and, and how we helped, and the city actually helped with Mr. Heinz.
Okay, one other thing I said, I'll, I'll be announcing, I'll be having a public meeting in my district, okay? In the next three weeks, I'll, I'll announce the date. And I'll be going, I'll have it on the big sidewalk, you know, you know, and I'll be pushing it for people to come out. And I'll be talking about what is happening in District One, what's been, been done in District One. I'll be talking things that have been accomplished in District One.
Okay, all right, Councilwoman Wash?
I would also like to extend a happy Father's Day to all the fathers. Also, to, I would like to also put out that Oakwood sidewalks are really bad, close to him rough. I've seen a couple of kids trip over the sidewalks, and I don't want anyone to get hurt. So, I can put that in the email and send that up to Mr. Bivens and yourself as well.
Yeah, I know that Mr. Bivens is, is on vacation, but Laturi is here, is, is in the audience, Ms. Joyce, as it relates to the RFP, and the RFP that's went out for the sidewalks to be completed for the whole entire city, correct? Has that RFP went out already? Okay, so we know that we will be, we have a sidewalk program, we will be fixing sidewalks in the entire city. We're just waiting, of course, we have to do process, so.
All right, and then the last thing, in regards to the agenda, new business, Item D, with, as a CD, you know, Kids Smart City, with a partnership with them, I see it as a great asset to the city and to the community. But after listening to everybody and all the council members and just all the questions, just like, like how Lee had stated, I think they, we may need to actually go back to the drawing board in regards to the amount, the parking part, partial of it. Because I know we did it twenty thousand, and I know he stated it was three hundred thousand put into it. So, I think we just have to go back to the drawing board and kind of come back where it's something that's fair, I guess, in regards to where meets everybody's needs, in regards to the amount itself. And the parking as well. But parking and also the land as well. So, that, that's all I have for tonight.
All right. And let me just make sure that I'm clear then. So, do you, do you all want, want us to continue to negotiate and come back and have David actually put together a purchase agreement that talks about reverts, that talks about, you know, land splits and who's responsible for surveys and all of that? Is that, because that's what we were supposed to be talking about if we had approved this thing. Then you add all those different things to it. So, is this, and, and then being that the gentleman is here that's looking to purchase the property, are you looking at, and, and we're talking about two things here. You're talking about the value of the old City Hall and the value of the old library. The library, it's all on one parcel. So, when you talk about that one ninety-five to two ninety-five, it actually breaks it down in this email. It talks about the square footage of ten thousand and the square footage of whatever it is. It's two separate prices. So, let, let's make sure that we're clear on that. The actual breakdown, and I had an assessor send that to you, so you had that particular breakdown for that cost of that building. It's like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, not one ninety-five to two ninety-five, but I get everything that we are talking about. I just want to make sure that I'm hearing you guys say that I need to do that. Because if I don't need to do that, I won't spend any more time on that. So, if you guys want to see it come back, I'll formulate it that way. I heard from a couple of you guys say that a little bit. You want to see that happen, then, you know, the applicant is here, he can come back and say, okay, this is what I'm willing to offer. You know, I know one of the big keys in, in the whole process was saying to him, I know that you're a nonprofit, but we need taxation. So, property itself, still, is going to be a full avalorium of taxes. So, that's the payment in lieu of taxes that was proposed to do. Now, that can balance way up, way down, however, because we know that they are a nonprofit. But you're talking about Nokia North America coming into Inkster and putting together a training facility for fiber optics and then wiring the entire community in two years. So, it's a big deal. This is not some small cake stuff, this is a big deal. It's going to change the whole landscape of our community, especially in that area. So, if I'm hearing you guys say that, then I continue to work with Jason. I think he wants to work and, and continue to work. I think, again, even with the intentions, his intentions were, you know, hey, let me see what you got. My back is against the wall. But I've gotten calls from Mayor Highland Park, I mean, a pro team of Highland Park that was at our ribbon cutting here in Inkster, and also to the mayor of Pontiac, that actually, you know, saying they want to partner with us because they're trying to get Jason to come there first. But I want Inkster to be first, because we're first in a lot of things. And this is huge for us to be first in this. I know it's going to be exciting. Just answer it. Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry, let me just go back to the floors, Wash, Wash.
Oh, I mean, I, I actually, you know, if you could go to the, and have the attorney look over it, and then like you said, bring it back to council with something with everybody where it kind of meets the needs. I'm totally open for that, because like you said, I do definitely want to see Nokia here.
All right, go ahead, Councilman Chisholm, then Williams.
Yes, I was just going to answer your, your question of, of should you continue negotiating or having the talks? Yes. Reason being, one, is we all looked at and say, oh, this could be a great project. I think, you know, and I'm not here to debate the process and steps of which it took, but we all have our own stance on how we think everything should have transpired. But at this point, with the amount of money they spent already going, spending this money on cleaning out something like that that the city didn't have to do already, and now are they going to pay us our money back? Or?
Oh, he know that already. He, he know that, me and him talking day one, he knew that the risk, what the risks were.
Right, but.
So, so, again, that's not going to happen, and I understand that. That's, that wasn't even a conversation, period. He knew what the risks were, because he's been in the community working with us. He should have been at the Chase Bank. That's where this program should be, should have been done. But we know some things happen in between, whether he dropped the ball or some, or something, whatever it happened, we were looking for alternative for them to stay in this community because this is huge for Inkster, huge for Inkster. It's like with Ford, back in sixty-four, was saying they're going to put the plant here instead of Wayne. All right, let me bish that one. Okay. How did he get in Wayne? Go ahead, but anyway, that's a whole nother subject. But, yeah, I'm with you one hundred percent.
That's all I have.
Yep, okay, all right, then, and.
I was just reading in there, I know he was, you know, they was talking about nonprofit paying taxes in lieu. But in this statement, I see that he, I just want to get clarification that he was going to pay taxes for what, sixty-five hundred?
Right, the full avalorium of it is sixty-five hundred.
Okay, but is that every, every year?
Yeah, it's taxes, yes, on the facility itself. I knew some numbers were threw out there, but if you're looking at the paperwork, it actually clearly shows that it's two pieces of property that we're talking about. We're only talking about one piece of property going to, to, to Jason. So, it's like one twenty-five is that number, it's not a hundred and ninety-five or two hundred and ninety-five. It's that complete campus, but we know that we're trying to split it. And we would say to them, because the city doesn't have any money, to say that we're going to do a survey and all of that just in case, to split the parcel. You know, if anything, we'll say, okay, let's go off for RFP and then say this is what we want to do with the entire campus or let a presenter come in and present to us. But what we're saying is that if we decide we're going to do something with Mr. Jason, is that we would put in there the parking lot, it's still the cities and, you know, the, the, the library is still the cities, and we would just split the parcel of land. They would be responsible for presenting the survey to us before we would sign it over. So, that stuff that we would put in, the purchase agreement, where David would actually develop it, bring it back to us, to this body, and then from there, to still be contingent upon the attorney's review. So, I don't know what the number is, but, you know, I don't know if somebody want to throw a number up?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And this A B T V, this is half of the market value, can you explain that?
One more time?
Where's this A B slash T V?
Let me see here.
Seventy-seven thousand, this is half of the market value?
Let me get to it, I'm sorry. Sorry, I can't look at what you're talking about. This is state equalized value? So, you're looking at the former, former City Hall, at ten thousand two hundred and eighty-seven square feet? Is that what you're talking about?
It's the email that Marvin had sent out, but it says A B T V.
Yeah, the assessed value and then the taxable value. Yep, that's what it is. So, it's the assessed value, so he was just breaking down the formula, I had to break down the formula for you as it relates to what's the assessed value and then how much we can tax it.
So, this is just the half, this is just half of the amount of market value? Because the full market value is.
So, he actually said it right down here at the bottom, and I'm looking at it now. It says ten thousand two hundred and eighty-seven square feet times fifteen dollars. He went from fifteen dollars to, it was twelve dollars, between twelve dollars and eighteen dollars, he put it at fifteen, saying that this is if the building was new. It's a hundred and fifty-four thousand at the market value. That, that's, that's what he was saying, and then based off of the mileage, that's why he broke down the estimate, annual taxes is six hundred and five, six thousand hundred dollars.
That assessed value is always half of it.
Correct, exactly. That's why you got your seventy-seven thousand dollars. Okay, all right, did you have anything else, Councilwoman Wash? Okay, Councilman Shaw? Can you, can you speak up a little bit, sir? Thank you.
I have a, I have a property over in, on Oakwood, Oakland Street. It's two six six two one Oakland. They have some piles of, piles of dirt there. It has been there for a couple of weeks.
In the front of the yard or?
Yeah, in the house over there, yeah. I mean, it, it's been tagged, I, I got some pictures of it, so I'll, I'll send them to you.
Okay, it's been tagged by code enforcement?
It's been, it's been tagged, it has a green tag on the house, but it's, that, that dirt has been there for, I'll say, at least two weeks. So, it's been there for, for some time. I think that they was trying to do some work on the house, but I've been watching it for two weeks.
Yep.
So.
So, so unfortunately, and, and fortunately, I mean, this is America. So, with private property, basically, with our ordinances. So with private property, basically with our ordinances, code enforcement has to go out, they put the green sticker, I got them now putting stickers on. So you guys, when you're seen in the community.
I seen the orange.
They put the stick saying, cut your grass.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Get, clean this up, or whatever it is. They've actually issued them a ticket, now the ticket goes to the other body, which is the judicial body. So then the judge has to put it on the docket, they don't pay, and then she has to make a judgment based off our ordinance. We can't go over and just clean it up, if we do go over and clean it up, that's a cost to the city and the taxpayers.
It's all, it's all in the streets, so the people, you know.
So we know that it may be an emergency cleanup, where we'll say, okay, let's clean it up, with that being said, it's an emergency cleanup, we clean it up because it's a hazard to the community. We clean it up, and then we put it on their taxes.
Yeah, and I'll send it to you, I mean, you know, you, you around, so you'll.
Yeah, I'll pull up over there, but I'm, I, I totally agree with you, if it's a hazard, that's what we'll do.
Uh, and also. There is a, a spongemint program.
Yep.
You know, that's coming out on the twenty-fifth, at nine AM at the Booker Dozier, I think that's been up with also. It's going to be the, uh, cleanup as well, so it's going to be a lot of folks out there, a lot of vendors out there, so I just want to encourage the community to spread that word. That this spongemint program is out there, the twenty-fifth, nine AM, so come on out, spread the word to everybody, because this is, this is very, very important for our community. You know, to get our residents a clean record, a clean slate, so that they can start over, so they can have, you know, the values that, I mean, the, the things that we have. You know, that freedom, you know, not, nothing looking over their heads. Uh, you know, I was talking in the barber shop concerning this program, and I was letting some folks know about it. You know, you can't even get no tuition with felonies on your record. You know, it's hard for you to even get a place to stay with felonies on your record. And this is a way that people can clean their slate, get those felonies off their record, start over, get some good paying jobs, you know. So I just want to encourage everyone, come on out. On the twenty-fifth, at nine AM, at the Booker Dozier. And also, as my colleagues had made mention, I am also in support of the mayor, negotiate even more concerning this property. Because it is, it would be a value to our community, especially with the taxes. We've been talking about doing something, getting something done. Tax, back onto the tax road, this is income into the community, this is income into the city's budget, and we definitely need that. So let's continue on, uh, you know, if we can get a little bit more for the property, we'll be fine, we'll be ideal, you know. But let's, let's make sure that both parties, that it be a win-win situation, and that we can have more members, you know, on board with it. It's in my district, I'm going to support it anyway, but I want to see it done, because I want to see it done. You know, I think we need something on that corner there, and if this can be a start of something new? And it can be a legacy that's left here in the city of Inster after we long gone. I definitely want to see that happen for the community. So I definitely want to have some more negotiation with it, you know, with my colleagues on that. So hopefully that can, that can transpire. And also, I just want to say this, if you say something, I would want you to say it with me, but if you see something.
Say something.
Say something.
Say something.
I say if you see something.
Say something.
Say something. Because you know, there, there's statistics that show that when the community is involved, crime is reduced. And it helps our community, it helps take the burden off our fine men and women in the police department. When we are actually involved, and when we say something, things get done. We let folks know that this is our neighborhood, this is our community, we live here. We are the next generation, I think we talked about it, young man, he, he talked about being fifty years old, and we are the new guard of the city of Inster. You know what I'm talking about, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Back at fifty.
Sure.
We that new guard that's in the city of Inster. And I'm a guard the city of Inster as long as I got breath in my body, because we are that new guard. And I'm a fight for this community, as long as I got breath in my body, I'm going to do so. This job don't have to pay me nothing, we could take a ten percent cut if you want to and put it back into the budget.
We did it before.
You understand? So, you know, it ain't about, it ain't about that for me, five hundred dollars or whatever somebody had said before. I don't care. But it's our community, and long as we stand tall and stand strong, we can get some things done. And I also want to say this, Mr. Chair? Is that as our men and women in blue travel throughout the city? I hope that they can continue to treat and be professional and be respectful to our citizens in the city of Inster. And let's treat them with dignity and respect as they travel throughout our community, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir, Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'd, I'd like to just first start off with, uh, let me see, I'm having this conversation again. Um. First of all, when I make statements, I have the documents right here, okay? And it's not necessarily to you, Mayor, because if you think about it, when I became a councilperson, I took your spot, and who did I call on? You kind of taught me what I know today. But everybody's taking it personal when I say what I have to say, and I don't like that, that's, that's unprofessional to me. Now, that's my job, checks and balances. So when I get up here and speak on themes, I have documentation behind me, but the level of disrespect I'm showing, that I'm seeing? Even from your administration, that's not going to happen no more. That's not going to happen no more, I've never seen an administration talk to a councilperson the way your treasurer has talked to me, but that's not, that's not going to happen no more. Okay, so, now I have a difference of, difference of opinion, you have a difference of opinion. But at the end of the day, we're going to walk out here smiling, because I'm leaving this behind. But when I'm a councilperson, I should be able to say anything that's pertaining to this budget and money, I should be able to say it without. Somebody say, well, you didn't do it three years ago, come on now, we got, we got to get past that. I don't like that, I would never do you like that, I would never do anybody where you didn't do something on council four years ago, what you're doing, but if you bring it up to me, I may bring it back to you. But I'm not going to do that, and I don't want that done to me. Very disrespectful. So, okay, so I'm going to leave that alone. Um, I would like to thank my police chief, I called him the other day, I gave him a personal phone call, because I looked out the window and seen two stray dogs. They were pit bulls, and then he said he would get right on it, and next thing I know, I seen cars coming back and down my street. And then when I looked out the window again, I'm not sure what officer that was that took, that took it, but I called him. I said, look, he's out there with these two dogs, I said, he's, tell him, come on, come on, I said, I hope he's going to be okay, but I know he did catch one. But I'm not sure if he caught the other one, I just want to tell him thank you for that, um.
He was also born.
Okay, but I was kind of scared, so I was calling him like, hey, you, you got to get somebody out here, because he got these two dogs sitting in front of him, and he like, come on, come on. So to this, thank you, and, um, thank you. Okay, now, another thing, um, I do know, Easter, uh, from, let me see, when I came home from work, uh. Easter in Indianapolis, we got orange barrels, do anybody know what's going on?
That's the road, the county's going to be.
The county is going to be fixing the roads, okay, because I'm not quite sure, I'm probably going to get some calls, so they, they, okay.
Yeah, that's the county road project.
Okay.
The continuation anyway.
Okay, now, another thing that I'm, I'm re-questioning, I'm asking, I sent out an email to my council, uh, body, uh, the mayor and the chief. And I'm looking at this budget, so my mind is going, and it's not something that I do. Uh, it's not the first time I've done it, I've always brought this up, but I asked for a list of cars, who's taking home cars, and. And, um, how many new cars that we have, because we have this new company called Enterprise. And what we, what the contract says here is that we, we want to make our police department and fire department whole with new cars, okay? So when it first was given to us in July? The police officers got some cars, uh, the mayor, some people in DPS, but it was supposed to be for DPS, police and fire, because. Our officers are driving around in really old cars, so this is a good program. But when the contract was passed, I noticed that we had some more cars that never came to council. And I sent out an email asking, um, for the, uh, who have car, who has new cars? Uh, and why wasn't we notified, because if you send our checks and balances? Then we shouldn't know, because it's going to be a budget amendment possibly, because we didn't budget it for this. And Enterprise does not have a budget line item like, uh, our IT. So we can look at the budget to see what's being used, that's what I'm asking. And I don't think that's, uh, a mean statement, but me looking at this budget and seeing what ways we cut, I always ask that question, and I ask that question all the time. Well, I, I did get some, um, clarification back maybe two weeks later. Um, and it's still really not clarification, but. I noticed that the mayor's assistant has, has a car. And I'm asking them why, okay, and the building department, well, they're pool cars. Okay, because I know the building department goes here and there, um, I do know the city clerk uses a pool car, um, during elections. But a pool car in the city of Inster's parking lot, his assistant is taking his car home. And it's not in their parking lot, now, if you all drive in the morning, drive at night, you're going to see that building's department's car out there. And I'm just was wondering why, since I can't get our email, I don't have to bring everything to council, but when you not appro, give me the answer that I'm looking for, you know what I'm going? And you ignore me, that's when I bring it up to council. Because with our budget being the way it is, the contract states, you know, police, fire, DPS, whatever, and I understand what you said. That you can do what you want because, but you can't, you have to let us know. And now, well, hold on, hold on, no, no, you just said it earlier.
No, I said I am overall.
You overall, but at the end of the day, we still need transparency, is what I'm seeing, and we're not getting it. So if we're not getting transparency, and we look at this budget and see, well, all of these, what was this purchase? How will we know? What is wrong with you calling, what was wrong with y'all coming to us as council and say, look, we getting?
Do anything, hold on.
No, no, wait a minute, you, wait a minute, hold on, wait a minute, let me speak, and you can. No, I'm not saying, listen, what was the reason, listen, well, if you listen, no, no.
Go ahead.
What I'm asking is, I asked, have we purchased any new cars since this contract was, was made whole? I still have not got an answer, but at the time.
You have the whole enterprise contract.
I have the whole enterprise contracts with.
We've gotten.
But the cars on, on here, the original, the contract that we signed said the fleet. It's got, okay, fire department, DPS, police, nothing says, nothing down here for pool cars. And, and, and I'm, I'm not knocking you for that, but what I'm saying is, because I do know, Bill, we do have a fleet car in city of Inster. Where individuals that work for the city, that have to do city business, use the cars. But asking, but why is yours administrative assistant taking this car home?
Because he's doing city's business.
Not at night?
He is.
No, 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 a pool car is supposed to stay in the city lot, just like those code enforcement cars are out there. Where does it say be, he can take his car home?
It doesn't say anywhere.
Well, that's what I, that's what I, that's, that's, that's all I have, that's, I'm just want the public to know, this is what our tax dollars are doing. I'm not sure if the police department has all of the units that they needed to get, but if not, then I feel sorry, because we just overlooked you guys. But no pool car, no pool car should be taken home at night, so it's not a pool car, it's personal car. And we paying city taxes, we paying insurance, and he probably getting gas, not. We never heard it, never heard this before, never heard of this. An essential, a non-incentual employee taking a car home every day. Only the police and fire and DPS, I've never heard of it, never heard, now, if you go to any municipality, you ask that, ask that question. But I'm looking into all of this as I'm looking at this budget, and we need to cut, we not cut, we spending more. So that's why, I mean, I'm not mad at anybody, I'm not mad at your assistant, because hey, he's a beautiful person, this is, this is business.
And he's handling city.
But he should not be taking a car home as a pool car, he should not. Because you can't call it a pool car when he takes it home every night. That's all I have to say.
Moving right along, all right, the spongemint fair, I just wanted to make sure that I, again, expanded on that a little bit more. Thanks to Safe Alsonad, my executive assistant, working with the attorney, Dina Nessel? And the Inster Alumni Chapter of Delta Theta Sorority, Inc., we will be having an spongemint fair at the Inster Recreation Complex. So it's not just the spongemint fair, but it's a resource fair as well, we'll be having health screening, dental screening, health and wellness resources will be there also too. We'll have water assistance there, utility assistance, rental mortgage assistance and tax assistance, and our treasurer, Eric Sabree, will be there as well with his team. All right, moving right into closed session, what do you have?
Three matters from there, uh, for closed session litigation, which would be Blackwell, U.S. District Court matter and the Sweetbead matter.
All right.
Did you say three?
Yeah, I did, but I don't see Chief Huber here, so I'm not going to mention the third.
Okay.
Okay, motion to go into closed session? Dispute support? Or any other discussion? You're in a non-favoritistic five percent, aye?
Aye.
Any names? All right, let's go to closed session, and we can come back out and close the meeting. Yeah, I'll be here from nine to twelve.
Yeah, anybody that's there, you just ask them for it. I'll be happy to give it to them. Please Johnson is organized. It'll be Thursday. That'll be fine, somebody will be able to get you an application.
Let's, uh, maybe let's talk about Blackwell first, talk about Blackwell first, so that I can leave. All right, Shaw?
If he's not here, if he's not here, I'll close it out. Well, tell him if he's in this office, we ready to go, so we can go home.
That's what, that's what I was looking for.
But he doesn't have to stay to, to, um.
I need thirty seconds.
Chair and the court.
I'm not a booker, I'm not calling it that. No, no, because what's happening is, you don't understand, y'all can't open your eyes and see, there it go.
Do you?
I'm just saying, you know, I, I'm not a, I'm explaining something to you, okay? I wish that grandma was still living, and she can tell you about me, I'm a for realist.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have to close out, so just give us, give us five seconds, okay? Okay, um, I'm just now hearing that the mayor has left, so I have to take over. Uh, we do, um, have something for closed session, and, um, I would like for my city clerk to read that.
So, in the matter of Sweetbead, this council has directed our city attorney to file an appeal.
And there's a motion on the floor for that, do I have any?
I need someone to make a motion.
Anybody wanna make a motion to that? Well, you read it, so do they have to still make the motion? Okay, so somebody have to read the same thing that she said, correct?
Make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, vote in accordance to the decision made in closed session.
Okay, do we have any support? Okay, uh, uh, we can't discuss anything, so all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those with nay, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so you wanna do a, uh?
I mean, yeah, we need a roll call.
You was not in there, George, so you have to be excused from that, because you was not in there. So you have to step aside from that, Mr., uh, Councilman Williams. You can't, you can't, because you was not in there. So you have to sustain yourself.
You gotta stand there, and I vote nay.
Okay, well, anyway.
You, you can put it down, or you wanna take it out.
We have, we have to do a roll call.
Did I hear more than one nay? What did I hear?
You gonna tell me how to vote?
Excuse me, I do have the vote, but when, when, when the discussion-
You're not in the closed session, you're in-
No, when the discussion was out in there, when we came in there.
I still have the right to vote.
Okay, just do, just do what you have to do, just do what you have to do, do what you have to do. Okay, roll call, city clerk.
Councilmember Shaw.
Councilman Shaw, come on, yeah, we should be doing the roll call.
What are you voting on?
Okay, keep going, get, get the roll call. Do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington.
Nay.
Councilmember Williams.
Nay.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley.
Yeah.
So the vote is three to two.
So the motion pass? Okay, motion pass.